I'd like to call to order the September 7th meeting of the City of Algoma Common Council. I'd like the clerk to take the roll, please.
Schmidt.
Here.
Havik.
Here.
Mervin.
Here.
Lattenbach.
Here.
Piarkey.
Here.
Boer.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Merrick.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect that this meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. Are there any changes to the agenda as published? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Scott, second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You have two sets of minutes, August 2nd and August 17th. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Any questions on any of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to accept both sets.
So moved.
Moved by Steve.
Second.
Second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comment. Is there anybody here this evening that wishes to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to item eight. General bills and credit card payments. Everybody have a chance to look at those. Any questions on any of the bills or the credit card payments? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Leah. Roll call vote, please.
Merrick.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Mervin.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. No requests for conference attendance. There's no claims, additional claims, and we'll move on to committee reports. Did you have a chance to televise your committee reports with the holiday and everything?
They were televised a couple of weeks ago.
So they were out there prior to the meeting, okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions of any of those reports? Hearing none, then I would accept the motion to accept those reports.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. There is no old, no old business. We're going to move into new business. I have a proclamation this evening that I would like to read and into the record. And it's a proclamation setting September 2021 as World Migratory Bird Month in the city of Algoma. Whereas the city of Algoma first received Bird City, Wisconsin, status in 2013, making it the first Kiwanee County community to earn that recognition based on its efforts to protect birds and their habitat. And whereas the city's location on the shores of Lake Michigan make it an important stopover for diverse groups of migratory birds, including waterfall, shorebirds, and landbirds. And whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that enhances our community and quality of life. And whereas these migrant bird species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insects, pests, and generating revenue related to bird watching, nature photography, and tourism. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas due to a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concerns are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day celebrations have become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas while WMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day and planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas the Bird City Algoma Committee will offer internet accessible opportunities to celebrate, learn, and support migratory bird conservation throughout the month of September. Now therefore I, Wayne R. Schmidt, as mayor of the city of Algoma, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as World Migratory Bird Month in the city of Algoma. And I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. Thank you. Let's move on to item B.
Before we move on from that, the Bird City Algoma Committee will have an information table at the book signing at Steel Street Trading Company and Gallery on Saturday, September 11th, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. for Janet Tunin's latest children's book. The book showcases birds, children, and our beautiful community. The Bird City Algoma Committee will also have an information table with a free native plant and plant seed giveaway at the Algoma Farmers Market on Sunday, September 26th.
Thank you, Erin. Okay. Any other comments on Bird City from anybody? Okay, then we're going to move on to item B. Resolution 1076-2021, sale of the 1966 Chevrolet Silverado, VIN number 7824. Erin?
It's a resolution authorizing the sale of the 1996 Chevy Silverado.
Okay, any questions on that?
One quick one.
Scott?
Generally in the past when we've had old equipment that was sold, did we, are we planning on putting this out to bid or like a closed bid?
Yes, we'll do a closed bid.
Is that what, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 1077-2021, cost share grant from the WI DNR. Erin?
A resolution authorizing an application to obtain a cost share grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion on that resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 1078-2021, TRC Environmental Contract.
A resolution authorizing a contract with TRC Environmental Corporation.
That's basically for our landfill. We discussed it at our finance and personnel. So I'll accept the motion on that. We don't have much of a say in whether or not we have this contract or not, so.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Leah. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 1079-2021, Engineering Services for Redevelopment Area Number Two.
A resolution authorizing the city administrator to use city monies to assist the redevelopment authority, RDA, with the payment of environmental review services and project management for the demolition of the city-owned parcel for redevelopment area number two.
I'll accept the motion and then I'm going to ask the administrator to comment on this.
So moved.
Moved by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Leah. You want to give a little better explanation to the council before they vote on it?
Yep, gladly. So what this resolution is more or less allowing us to do is supplement monies that the RDA currently possesses. As you know, we have two CDBG grants that were awarded for the redevelopment area project. One of those is the CDBG closed grant, which was that $700,000 we received earlier in the year. One of the requirements for that grant is that we quote, "begin the demolition process" by December 31st of this year. We can meet that deadline if we follow the CDBG processes outlined, but it doesn't give us a whole lot of breathing room if something were to go wrong. So that's point number one that I want everyone to kind of keep in mind. Point number two is that we have more expenses in this project than we do CDBG money. So we've already committed in our capital budget for this year over $100,000 for this project anyway. And so what doing this will, basically what we're asking to do here, and what the RDA actually, I should say, what the RDA decided to do is fast-track the process and use our current engineering firm, Robert E. Lee, to perform the environmental review because we need to do that before we can actually demolish the property. So the environmental review takes about 30 days and then we go from there. But we also need them to line up contractors, which again, they can be doing concurrently, so that's not an issue. But by getting the ball rolling now, we're able to buy ourselves about three weeks in case something were to go wrong. Now again, we're not expecting anything to go wrong, but you know, I just would hate to see something, you know, a wrench get thrown in the gears, so to speak, and then we end up having some problems with this grant money. So basically what we're looking to do is use non-grant monies. So the monies allocated to the RDA from the sale of the Second Street parcel earlier this year. As you remember, part of that decision was to give the RDA monies for this project, so we're looking to use that money. And then supplement anything over that as needed from either one of two sources. The capital borrowing that I mentioned earlier, or, and what we're still looking for clarification on is if we can use some of the ARPA monies that we were awarded. Because one of the provisions within the ARPA plan or the act, bill, whatever you want to call it, is for quote, "neighborhood redevelopment." That's kind of a nebulous term. We've asked our auditors. They said they're not entirely sure. So that's something we're looking at as well to use those monies as an option as well. So what this basically does is it gets this process started right now while we're still receiving the proposals from other engineering firms for the rest of the project. So this would be an environmental review for the entire block and then project management for the demolition of the one parcel that the city owns. So as long as we quote, "have a shovel in the ground" by December 31st for that house, we're good to go. So I did hear back today from Robert E. Lee with updated numbers on this. And they are telling me it will be $7,000 for the environmental review and $10,000 for the project management of the demolition, so $17,000. And they said there might be an additional $4,000 to $5,000 if there's any asbestos abatement required. So that gives us an estimated total of 17,000 to 22,000. Again, we would use the RDA money that they already have allocated, which is over $14,000 from that parcel sale, towards it. And then basically I'm looking to use the appropriate monies from the city to supplement that, to get this process started now and more or less fast-track it and get us some breathing room in case something goes haywire with it.
Okay. Any questions?
The environmental part of that is on actually the house, if there's asbestos and things. Is that why you can't tear it down beforehand?
Part of it, yeah. So the environmental review looks at a number of things. Primarily it's to look for, are there any endangered species, flora or fauna, plants or animals that would be jeopardized or otherwise harmed from this, stuff like that. They said it's very common, especially for a project where there are no concerns, that they'll send the letters out. And like the DNR, for example, just they don't even reply within the 30 days. And then by law, once that happens, it's assumed to be approved. So they said that's in all likelihood what's going to happen here. So that's really what it is. And then, like I said, then the other, there's that $10,000 for the project management, which basically means lining up contractors and managing the demolition of the project, or the parcel.
That's just for one parcel or all of the parcels?
Just the one parcel.
$10,000 for that one house?
Where do I apply?
No. All this hundred thousand dollars that you want to put in the cap for improvement, is it something that you really need? I mean, wasn't that the object of all these grants?
Yeah, no, we, it is needed. That money is for among, well, for the entirety of the project, but also for, you know, like sidewalks, water, sewer, electrical work. We knew that the grants wouldn't cover the entire amount needed for the project. And so there is money in the capital borrowing for this redevelopment project for those.
But do we have a firm that's going to be ready to start, you know, building or vice versa so that you got to worry about electrical, sewer, water? I mean, when you're doing it, what I'm saying is, is there a reason it has to be out of next year's budget? It can't be put in. I'm sure this is going to go on for a couple of years. Is there any reason you can't put that into 2022 budget, capital improvement? I mean, it's.
I guess, I don't know, point of clarification, like throughout the term of the project, these are going to come up for every property, right? But in order to get started, we have to have a shovel in the ground.
Right, I understand that, but what are you doing with the, you can't take the money out of the grant?
No, we, we can, but as it relates specifically to this, we're, we're going to have to spend city money no matter what.
That I understand.
So this is more of a time issue, a time. I'm just looking to remove any potential hurdles that might come up along this process so that we don't miss the deadline with this project. We don't need to do this, but I'm highly recommending it because it gives us breathing room in case something goes wrong.
Is the December 31st deadline the reason that we can't use future fiscal year dollars?
Well, the.
I guess, can you clarify what you mean by that?
Well, what I was hearing is that, Lee, you suggested that we put it in the fiscal year 22.
Right.
But we have to have that shovel in the ground, which we can't put in until we have that DNR environmental assessment.
Correct.
And that's got to happen before December 31st of this year.
And that's why I'm just asking, why can't you take money from the grant for that?
We can. That is, that was the original plan. But it doesn't give us a lot of breathing room in case something goes wrong. I guess what.
I was just going to say the, going out for an RFP is going to save us three weeks. Like no matter what, we have to spend this money. But by going with one ahead, standard procedure, correct me if I'm wrong, but standard procedure would be to send this out, like in a request for, like for a quote, and have them get us numbers back in two to three weeks. By going with our in-house engineer for this very, this first one, that's going to save us three weeks so we can get the shovel in the ground.
We don't get the money until we spend it from the grant, correct? They're not just writing us a check for a million, $700,000 and sending it over to City Hall.
Correct. They more or less, they set the money aside like in an account.
Right.
Almost like, I guess I don't want to call it an escrow, but that's essentially how it would function.
I guess you raised the eyebrows of the public works director with that fee of $10,000. Is that only for the property that we own?
Correct.
I think Jared, that we need to talk to Robert E. Lee. I think there's some miscommunication of what Jared looked at. That house is going to cost the city somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 to tear down. There's no way $10,000 to do an environmental impact study. It's a, it's a two-story residential residence.
Right.
Something's not right with that.
Yeah.
That, I'm not sure how it was communicated to Robert E. Lee. But, I mean, if we take $10,000 times the seven houses, we're going to be in for $100,000 for environmental fees.
So, okay, so again, just to clarify. $7,000 for the environmental review for the entire block. $10,000 for the project management for the demolition of that parcel. Now, I understand that's still a lot.
Even that's too high. That's too much.
So then you're going to pay $10,000 for every parcel that you're going to have to get rid of?
I wouldn't anticipate that, no. I think that this one would be higher if you, on like a per parcel basis because we're, for lack of a better term, parcelling it out.
Piecemealing it. It's not the whole package.
Did we do a smoke, we did a smoke test on that house with the fire department or something, correct?
Well, they utilized it. They utilized it.
So probably the electricity and water is already out of that house, right?
Correct.
So that's not going to be a block for us. I don't know what the hurdles would be other than.
Asbestos would be.
Gas, I mean, other than the asbestos.
Why don't you do this, Jared? Let's, let's see if we can pass this subject to you, going back to Robert E. Lee. Robert E. Lee is our engineering firm and that does seem a little high for just one house. And, you know, because we do have $14,000 now. But if they're telling you it's 17,000 and it could go up to 22, depending on what they find with the asbestos, you've almost got enough money to cover this. But you need to go back and get clarification on the 10,000. And if that's the case, then we probably should go out for an RFP.
It is included in the RFP that was sent out.
Yeah.
So basically, so I guess that's another, a good point to bring up here is if this were to pass, what we, what I would do is tomorrow amend the RFP, removing the environmental, this component from the RFP that went out. So this is out there in the RFP.
The only, the only thing is there's other firms that are going to be bidding based on the RFP that you sent out, which this is part of the RFP.
Correct.
It might come back from another firm that instead of $10,000 for that house, it might only be 5,000, as an example. So to rush, to rush into giving it to Robert E. Lee without seeing, I know what, I know what you want to do because we're under time restrictions. This whole project, I mean, we don't, we haven't even gone out for bids or anything yet. We haven't drawn up any RFP for a contractor. This is the first step in order to clear the hurdle so that we can go ahead and start getting some of our funds. It says you have to have at least one property started, which is the city's property. But I would suggest going back to them and if the council wants to pass this subject to further, otherwise you'll have to come back to the finance personnel committee with it. So there is a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion or what would the council like to do with it? It does seem a little high, just with one property.
Jared, maybe this is just a question, because the demolition of that one house is going to be under $25,000. Do we even have to have Robert E. Lee put something, can't we just go out to a local contractor and hire somebody for the demolition of a house?
That would be my suggestion.
If it's under $25,000, we don't need to go out for a state bid awards because of the Act 10.
But the only thing to be careful of is because of this money that we're getting from the CDBG.
And that's why I'm asking.
They have certain guidelines that they put on this in order for us to get the money. And I thought that's what was explained to us.
This needs to be done in order.
In order to get the process.
Part of the CDBG grant funds.
And then I guess, go offense. Well, I guess maybe that should have been explained to us so a lot of these questions would have been answered. I mean, we aren't on the RA authority, so we don't know what the specs are on the CDBG grant. I just don't understand why we got a, you got a million, almost a $2 million grant. And all of a sudden you want to take $100,000 out of our, you know, put on our capital funding, where we got other things in the city that's got to get fixed. When we don't even know who's going to be, that block could get settled out and it could sit there and we don't even have anybody that's looking into developing it. Right?
Well, it's a good, it's a valid point, Lee. I don't necessarily disagree.
I mean, I just think it's, you know.
This, this project is going to cost more than.
Well, and that I understand, but at the same time, can't we get somebody that's going to be developing to help out a little?
At this point.
Not at this point.
I mean, we're giving, we got the block for them. We got some grants. I mean.
We don't have the block yet. There's a, there's a lot of legwork that's got to go into this. First of all, we have to go and we have to get two, each property has to be appraised by two appraisers.
Three.
Three.
Two, if the property owner wants a third one, then we have to pay for a third one. We're only required to get two. That's going to take, that's going to take us some time. Once we get the appraisals, now we have to negotiate with each property owner to see what we're going to be able to buy that property for. That million seven that we got is not going to cover everything.
Well, that I understand.
Once we get that done and we secure the property, then we can go out and do an RFP for a developer. Doesn't pay for us to go to developers now because we don't know if we're getting all the property. I mean, we have two property and three property owners that don't even want to sell. But we've worked our design around and I think, you know, you're all welcome to come to the RDA meetings, but our minutes are out there. And the thing is, this is the first step. If, if you feel that you don't want to do that, this is fine. This isn't going to stop us from moving forward.
And that's what I was asking. Is it something that you got to have in order to keep?
No. What he's trying to do is.
You want extra cash?
Trying to move the process along because otherwise we're going to wait until we get all the RFPs back that you sent out. Once we get them back, then we're going to have to look at who's the cheapest. Well, we thought since Robert E. Lee's our engineer, we could eliminate a step. But if the council doesn't feel comfortable with that, that's fine. You know, I, we live with it. The only thing we have to remember is that we have to have a shovel in the ground no later than December 31st. Because if we don't, we lose the grant money. And then if we lose the grant money, then the project dies. So I have a motion on the floor. There are any other questions or comments? Otherwise, if we vote the motion down, then we'll, we'll go on from there. It's up to each individual. Vote your conscience.
We can't take that building down ourselves now?
No.
If we rented a higher, we couldn't.
No, whether the CDBG funds it or not, we wouldn't be able to have the ability to take it down ourselves. I think it's just a matter of clarification to talk into Robert E. Lee and letting him know that. I think maybe there's some communication or mixture that we need to sit down. I mean, it's a demolition of a house. It doesn't have to go up to WAMs. This isn't a state bid. It's a local contractor that's going to come in here and take a house down.
Would it be prudent to provide a cover off of Robert E. Lee to the $10,000?
Yeah, and I think another thing we have to look at is what their construction management timeframe, that $10,000. We don't need a guy, an engineer from Robert E. Lee to be out here for three days watching him take down a house.
Yeah, what are, what are we getting for $10,000?
That's why I think we just have to, I think it's a matter of miscommunication and, you know, you called them to get a number and probably just a broad scope that we need to bring in the numbers and narrow it down into, you know, I think we can be a lot tighter than $10,000. I'd feel more comfortable probably in the $3,000 or $4,000.
I was going to say 25, so, yeah.
Erin, did you have something to say? I saw you.
No, just, just that this is to speed up the process. This isn't to get more money. This isn't, like Wayne had said, we're going to be taking this money no matter what. It's just this is going to speed up the process to ensure that we get a shovel in the ground by December 31st. It's not saying that we're not going to get it in by December 31st. If we go the other route, that's, it's just if any hiccups or anything comes to, comes light from it, we're, we've got more of a crunch, whereas this gave us a little wiggle room.
What if the land comes back and it has a bunch of endangered plants on it? Can we still tear the house down?
So my first comment is it won't. There's no, there's absolutely no expectation of, of that happening.
You don't know that for a fact.
But hypothetically, if that would happen, I, I can't tell you that. I don't know what that process then looks like. I don't think that that kills the project, certainly. I mean, there has to be a contingency for that in the CDBG.
My thought process is, can we still get, do enough to get the grant if we get a roadblock?
Well, the only problem you got to be careful of, Steve, if you get a roadblock on that property, does it expand to all the properties to the north and south of that house?
Right now, we're just worrying about the initial date.
Yeah. And I know what you're saying. There's been projects that have been, throughout the state, that have been held up because it was a butterfly or, you know, an Indian burial ground or something like that, so.
And the environmental review is for the whole block.
For the, for the whole block, not just that.
Correct. That's what needs to happen. It's 30, I think it was 30-day process roughly.
Yeah, I agree with that part of it, but that other part really.
So.
That puts a burden on us.
That falls within the range that we are authorizing for the administrator to go through to include a lesser amount.
Yes. When you, when you read the resolution, the only thing is if you pass it, he still has to go back to Robert E. Lee and try to see if, I mean, I'm sure everything's negotiable, isn't it nowadays?
Yeah, I think everything, to fast-forward it is a great idea. I think it's just a matter of sitting down with Robert E. Lee and hiring him out. I think they're looking at it as a big, huge out-to-bid picture where it's the demolition of a house.
I think that there's a pretty clear understanding of what it is that I'm asking. I mean, their, their response back to me is, you know, from their environmental specialist there, environmental review of the entire block, $7,000. The project management, i.e. lining up contractors to begin the demolition of the city-owned property only, parentheses, single parcel, $10,000. Additional four to five asbestos inspection is needed. It could be that they think that there's more to this property than we know that there is and that's why it's high, but I mean. Um, it could be that they think that there's more to this property than we know that there is, and that's why it's high, but, I mean, they understand this is for a single parcel and the demolition of a single property.
Well, then you, you need to go back to them and tell them that the council feels it's too high.
Did you send him a picture?
I did.
Well, they have all-
A picture. But, well, they have the redevelopment plan, so they do, yeah, they do have a picture.
Well, that's not-
The house is different than Dr. Anderson's house.
I mean, to line up a contractor to take it down is, is a little high. I mean, we can go out and, I can find contractors that'll come in and tear that house down. So, um, okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's your prerogative as the council to either approve it or deny it. Um, I still will send Jared over to talk to Robert E. Lee tomorrow.
So, so if we approve this, what's on the floor right now, does that include that ten thousand dollars?
Yes, it does.
Mm-hmm.
Because the resolution says it can go up to twenty-five.
Yeah. Not, and so if it comes in less, we're covered. So if they come back and they say, well, we're gonna do it for five, okay, that's fine, but this is the cap.
So this is eleven thousand dollars in excess to the fourteen that's already been set aside.
Yeah. Any other questions? I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on this one.
All right. Mary?
No.
Schmidt?
No.
Pavick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Piarkey?
No.
Lattenbach?
No.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
No.
Five no's.
Okay. So that resolution fails? I would still like you to talk to Robert E. Lee tomorrow.
Yeah, if I, well, I mean, if I can get them under the fourteen, then they can still go ahead.
If you get them under the fourteen, we have fourteen thousand set aside, so you don't need the council's approval on that, so. Okay, uh, item F, motion to approve adding Rachel Hansen to the Algoma Fire and Rescue Department. I have no idea who Rachel Hansen is.
She's been running as a ride-along for quite some time while she was completing her E and P basic course.
Okay.
So she's got some experience with us now that she's through the ride-along program, and I think she'll be a good fit.
Okay.
She from town, town?
Pardon me?
She live in town?
Uh, she lives right outside of town, uh, but is willing to come in and take her call during, during her time here.
All right. I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Lee, second by Scott. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Temporary Class B, Class B retailer license for Ernest Hockey American Legion Post. Any comments on that there, clerk?
No, it's a temporary license. Um, they are having their, um, ninth district conference on ten to twenty-one at the, um, over at the American Legion.
Okay. Motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Kevin, second by Casey. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Liquor license application, Lakeside Enterprises of Algoma LLC, five ten Fourth Street, pop-up shops of Algoma. Agent Nicholas Eker. Aaron?
Um, this went to the PPP committee. Um, the PPP committee, um, how do you say it, denied the license.
Recommended.
Recommended denial for the council. So now it's up to the council to decide if they are going to approve it or if they are going to follow the PPP and deny it.
Okay. Since it is an agenda item, and the gentleman's name is there, I see he's here this evening. Um, because it's on there, he's here, if the council has any questions, then you can direct him to Nicholas Eker at this time. This is not just a under public comment. This is actually an agenda item, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself. I own a business that would be in direct competition with this individual.
Are you getting a liquor license?
I am not, but-
Oh, okay.
But thank you for asking and considering it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, questions, comments?
I can give a little bit of background if you like.
Yeah, go ahead.
For the council members. Uh, so last week when we had our PPP meeting, uh, this was one of the agenda items, uh, for the new liquor license for, for Lakeside Enterprises. It's the old Napa parts, Napa Auto Parts store, um, right next to the current DMV building. Um, what was presented was a, a well-put-together, well-worded, uh, business application, business plan, I should say, um, that included executive summary, company overview, business structure, kind of how, how this, how this individual or this, this LLC was planning on operating, what the future looked like for the business. Um, along with that, there, there was several discussion among the group. Um, after doing, uh, after several, several minutes of discussion, um, the committee's thoughts were that it was best not to move forward, that it was in a retail, uh, store application. Um, the business plan that was presented to us was, uh, although it was well-worded and, and, and very professional, it was rather vague. Um, there were, uh, it was lacking some, some very specific details. Um, hours of operation, the, the intent, the, the, the fore said, the, uh, individual businesses that were going to be located within that business. Um, and to, to hand over a liquor license a- a- as a, uh, over-encumplishing or as a broad, um, ability for the owner, um, to, to use as, as, as they wish, um, was a little bit of a liability. Um, there was also a brief discussion regarding the, uh, background, uh, background investigation, the application itself, as well as, um, insurance and liabilities and, and, uh, issues like that. So, that, that is, that is why we, we as the body voted, and it was our recommendation that at this time, um, to deny the application as it was presented. Um, not saying that, uh, you know, whether it's, it's up to this body here tonight. Um, and as the mayor alluded to, Mr. Ekers here, if you guys have any questions, by all means, uh, please reach out.
I just have one, one comment on that. Um, per Wisconsin State Statute one twenty-five thirty-two, three M, no other business may, may be conducted on the premises operating under a Class B license or permit, um, per the business plan provided this is a retail space. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. Questions or comments of Mr. Eker, as long as he's here? So what I'm looking for then is I'm looking for a motion and a second to follow the recommendation of the Protection of Property and Persons Committee to deny the license.
I'll make that motion.
No, second.
Motion by Steve, second by Lee. Any other questions or comments of this motion? And any, no questions or comments of Mr. Eker? Do a roll call vote on this one.
Meverden?
Yes.
Piarkey?
Yes.
Lattenbach?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, so seven yeses. Okay. That like, that request is denied then by the council, so. Okay, then let's move on to the administrative's report.
Uh, so redevelopment area number two update. We've already talked a little bit about that. Uh, we have RFPs out to five separate engineering firms. Uh, that would include Robert E. Lee, Ayers, Cedar Corp., uh, Foth, and Veerbecker. Uh, the due date is next Wednesday, the fifteenth. Uh, and then the following day, the re, the RDA review panel, which consists of myself, Alderman Meverden, uh, RDA Chair Oleniechek, and our consultant Gary Becker will go over those. And then we will put together, uh, the recommendation for the Finance and Personnel Committee to, uh, consider at its September twenty-first meeting. And that'll be for the scope of the entire project. Uh, kind of the, the hot button issue, I'm sure you, you've been contacted about here, is the rezoning application for two oh two Clark Street. Uh, so the Plan Commission met, uh, two Thursdays ago, on the twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth, and held their public hearing on the matter. Um, after the public hearing and some deliberation, ultimately the Plan Commission pushed it back, uh, to another meeting, uh, when the entire commission would be present, so that will be this Thursday, the ninth, at seven PM. Um, and I just wanna take this opportunity to again encourage anyone at home, uh, that this will not be a public hearing. And so if there are any comments that you wish to have submitted for the public record, to do so in writing, addressed to either myself or the clerk, if we get them before the Plan Commission meeting, we will send them to the Plan Commission and then the council. If we get them after the Plan Commission meeting, they will be sent to the council only. Uh, so submit any comments you have in writing, and I'll go before the council on October fourth. Uh, as far as the budget, uh, we've put together our preliminary budget and entered the requests from the different departments. Uh, we're currently over budget, so we have, we have some work to do on our end. Uh, and so the treasurer and I, Amber and I, are, uh, meeting with the department heads either later this week or next week to start going over that, to see where we can start getting us back, uh, get us in balance, so that when we present it to you guys, uh, we're presenting a balanced budget. Uh, kind of a singular issue here, damaged lift station. Uh, so last week, uh, there was a, well, an accident, basically a delivery truck veered off road, off County Road S, and damaged one of our lift stations near the intersection of Bay Road. It's on the east side, uh, of County S there at that intersection. Uh, so Suez, per their contract, is going out there and they're, they're fixing the lift station. There was also some damage to the utility pole. If you have any questions about that, I would direct you to the utility manager. Um, but, uh, more or less, the, we're, we're working on that. Um, the property owners, uh, one property owner is not, they're, they, they go to Florida for the, uh, they're, they're not, they're not currently here, as I understand, they're not in town. But nonetheless, left them a voicemail explaining what happened. The other home that would be affected is currently being renovated, so no one's living there. Uh, so for the time being, until it's fully fixed, uh, more or less, Suez is working with a contractor to physically go out there and actually pump any wastewater, you know, that's within that lift station. It's actually affecting two lift stations, as Suez explained it to me, because there's a, a lift station to the north of there that actually connects to this one. So it's affecting two of our lift stations, but it's the one that's damaged. Any bills that they incur, I've asked them to forward to me, uh, and then for insurance purposes, if we need to, to submit that, we will. So, um, that's what's going on there. Let me, you know, if you have any questions, let me know. Um, and then the Public Safety Building, a little amendment here. Uh, after I typed up the report, the meeting actually got pushed back, so the Public Safety Committee, uh, Public Safety Co- Building, excuse me, Committee, uh, is actually gonna be meeting next Monday, uh, for its third meeting, and that's when we're gonna go over our cost estimates, our square foot estimates, 'cause the, the concept has been refined, uh, and kind of redone, simplified, cut the costs a little bit, um, fine-tuned the, the layout and things like that. So we'll have a much better picture of what this is gonna cost per square foot and total project cost. And then as a part of this meeting, we'll determine what the next, the next steps are. So I just wanted to let you guys know kind of where, where that's at so far, so, um, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Jared's report or of Jared on something else besides that? All right, thanks, Jared. All right, then let's move on. Mayor's appointments. I don't have any appointment. I think everybody saw the email that, um, the school representative on the library will be changing, and it'll be Catherine Strutz, who is, I think, the school librarian, correct, Kathy? She'll be sitting on that, uh, library board now. She'll be replacing another individual, so. Um, does anybody else have anything that they wanna bring up at this time as far as any activities or anything coming up in the city that you'd like to take advantage of this time on TV to let the public know? Casey?
Just wanna follow up that the farmer's market just entered in our second half, so we'll be running through the end of October, with the exception of September nineteenth. We have six vendors, uh, but we have a, a complete complement of, of goods for you. We have lotions and beef and lamb, all things apples, vegetables, canned goods, um, and, and the aforementioned Bird City will be there on the twenty-sixth with native plants and seeds. Uh, so if you haven't had an opportunity yet, we're, we're there every Sunday from nine to noon, again with the exception of September nineteenth, uh, through the end of October. And thanks, everybody who's come out so far, and, uh, it's, it's been a good year, and we, we hope to see some more folks coming out.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep. The only other thing I wanna mention is don't forget September eleventh is the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. We wanna make sure that we don't forget. Um, I know they're having, did you have your walk already up the steps?
No, that's on nine eleven.
Okay, um, let's not forget what happened twenty years ago, and let's hope it never happens again, so I just wanted to mention that, so. Steve, you had something?
I did not.
No? Leah, anything? Jake? You got nothing coming up? Okay. Nothing else, then I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Any items for next meeting, make sure you get to Aaron or to Jared. Next meeting date, Monday, October fourth at six PM. Motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved by John, second by Steve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.